Yeah, too many penalties. They just need some discipline.
Yep, for sure.
Yep. Most penalized team in the league this year. Just shocked themselves right in the first place. Maybe next year.
I keep saying it.
See, I'm a Cubs fan too, so it took me about forty-seven years to see them win the World Series.
And they did do it.
Yeah, finally.
It'll come.
And they got rid of all the good guys.
I don't know.
It's hard to say Cubs fan. I was like, oh, man.
I don't know why.
I know. I think they're rebuilding or something, but...
Yeah, it's frustrating.
It's so frustrating.
It is.
Life is a sport. Want a Cubs fan and a Cowboys fan on my entire life?
I'll forgive you. I'll be with you with the Cubs, but I won't forgive you the Cowboys.
My entire life. They can say, well, you're a Cubs fan.
Yeah.
So if you lose one, you're like, what do they play tomorrow?
Yeah.
Travis Kelsey and Derek Oren have the same number of posts and touchdown passes.
Oh, really?
Well, there's a...
That change game was ridiculous.
Yeah, there's a meeting that...
And I sound pretty spotty. We're super close. We're beat to be held by San Diego. Like, yeah, we're rubbing it in.
I had to basically pull battery backup out and then we piped it along and pushed it up and then I put it high end. I just tied it in.
Well, she doesn't work. She doesn't turn some... Do a lot of middle of the day.
Yeah, I was checking. I just might come out of that a little direct, but it's not hard wired. I mean, I would...
We have a twenty-eighty with the county for some of the folks that are...
Man, I've got one game left before I go.
I think so.
I was a little worried. I was so deep. I was gonna break there.
That's the word.
Last, what, yesterday?
We have six to start.
How are you?
Is your all in bed?
Huh?
Is your all in bed?
I'm under that roof. See, uplifting. I think you're sleeping now. Screwed up for anything.
What?
Did that screw work for you?
Oh, no. I, I mean, like, in one property, it was, it was done for anyway. So it's like, okay. So I just went and got another quarter inch screw, or another quarter inch bolt, block nut, and worked perfectly the next three times. It's the three properties that used it on.
Been a while. Yeah, they kind of sucked our line. Okay, he's not bored.
Yeah, I put it on.
Did he move that far away? I guess I was just staying out too, because that's usually telling that address or anything.
And then you bought a new property on the county or shithead's. So you have to wait hours.
So I did a part of the job when he died.
Seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Mitchellville City Council of Order. Roll call.
Willamette, Hoover, here, Roberts, Roberts.
Here.
Calmen.
Here.
Mayor Murrow.
Here. Please stand for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the tenant agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Lawler.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
We got a pretty long consent agenda today, so if anybody want, at the table wants those items, move down to their own item, let me know. I'll read you that in the discussion part. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion on any of those items? Roll call.
Willamette.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
The next item is approving Ryan Huska to the Library Board of Trustees for a term expiring December twenty-twenty-four. Have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Second.
For that one, we had quite a few applicants. And Iowa Code sixty-nine point sixteen A requires that we try to stay within the gender balance. And that was one of the big items that was emphasized at us on that. That's why I selected him for that position. Anybody having any other discussion? Roll call.
Lawler.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Next item is appointing Josh Sears to the Parks and Right Commission, term expiring December twenty-twenty-four. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Calmen.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Next item is approval of appointing John Woods to the Board of Adjustments, term expiring December twenty-twenty-four.
So moved. One second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Our next item is a set the date by motion for the annual spring cleanup at Saturday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-two. That's the date we got from Metro Waste. I like it. It's a lot earlier than most of the dates we've gotten over the last couple of years. I think we should hop on while we got the chance.
Motion to approve.
One second.
Any other discussion? We have to have the stuff out on the curb by the night before. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then, how soon can we put it out?
We usually like to say not more than a week.
That's why I bring it up, so people know not to...
Yeah, usually we say not more than a week before cleanup date.
It's on a Saturday, so starting Monday will probably be good. Yeah, that's right. People would want to put it out before garbage. Yeah. Then they're gonna be like, you don't have to...
Or just put it a little ways away from your garbage.
This is your best job.
Tell them what George ties up.
Uh, the next item...
Now, they haven't voted on that.
Oh, come on, man. Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Calmen.
Yes.
Willamette.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Uh, next is a demonstration on the meter reading and billing process.
All right, Adam, you're up. I, um, had the idea that we would kind of give a short demonstration of what the meter reading looks like. Because a lot of people either think we read it and write down numbers and transpose those, and maybe that's where errors come in. So we're gonna kind of go with basic. Adam, hold up the meter first. That is the meter. It is in your basement somewhere, your crawl space. Every house has one. And it has actual numbers on it that registers your water in the house. Um, often when people call and say they're, they're, when they had a high usage and they say, we don't know what happens, I always try to tell them to go down and look at their meter at night before they go to bed. If they have a lot of numbers turning in the morning, you know you had water used somewhere. Because even, you know, your ice cube's filling up overnight. It's not gonna use it. Then what's attached to the meter is what we call a reader. And that is outside your house somewhere, often on the, the outside wall of your house.
Yep.
Adam might be able to tell you where...
Just have it on the outside.
They know where they all are. And as you can see, it is connected to the meter by wires.
And if there's a cut in the wire, then yes, it will not read, but your meter will still work if there's wire is damaged. It won't, uh, the cut wire will not stop the meter from counting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't be able to read it. We use actually this handheld gun here. We walk up, we touch it, we push the button, we wait for the click. Wirelessly, wirelessly goes to the handheld. The handheld collects the information. After we're done reading, uh, the whole town, we take this back to City Hall. We put it on this base here. It connects, and this is connected to Bree's computer. And then she automatically downloads every reading that we've hit on every house from the handheld. And then, from there, I don't know the process of America.
So, you know, just to, to reemphasize, so they, they, every time they read your meter, they take that gun and they're reading the outside reader.
Yep.
They're not going in your house and reading your meter from your meter. They're reading it by the reader on the outside of your house. And it's all done electronically. They're not writing down numbers. When they bring it in to Bree, she plugs it in, or it's already in the orange, what we call the handheld.
Yep.
She docks that in that docking station, is connected to her computer, and it goes all in her computer.
And how frequently do those machines need to be updated? As I've heard, they do have a high rate of...
When you say machines, what...
The handheld device.
The handheld device stops working and we can't read meters. So then we get a new one. In my time here, we purchased new ones once. Um, the gun, I don't know. You guys have gotten a new gun in the last...
We had a new gun, I think, three years ago. So that's about as far.
Yeah, so when they stop...
This has been recently updated in the program. I know it's been updated. Uh, Bree and Ronnie was discussing that.
Yeah.
I think that was not too long ago, so everything does today.
Because usually if something's going wrong with either the gun or the handheld, the handheld is that orange thing that's connected to your computer. Um, when Bree, every month before they take it to read, she downloads all the addresses into it. Um, because there's some updates in the month. Sometimes we have a new house in town.
We carry this on us when we're walking, as we're walking.
So if, if it, when it starts not working, it won't let her download to it. Um, and the gun, like Adam was saying, the gun will just stop reading if it's gonna stop working. And that's when we call our, our supply guy and tell him we need to, and usually he'll bring out a loaner until we can, um, purchase another one. That's happened, like I said, once. You got the new gun.
Um... Question. Then how come Sam Redmond's was so far off?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna get to that. It wasn't off with these readings. It was off with the, what happens next. So after all of that is downloaded into Bree's computer, she gets reports like this. Uh, this is one month, and she gets a big, long report that shows any funny uses. Any, any, anything that looks weird, like anything that's registering more than two thousand gallons above or below your average usage will be flagged on the report. And she goes through these one at a time and writes what we call our reread list. So these are ones that kind of had a hinky read, and she wanted the guys to go out and read again. So for instance, um, on this list, there were quite a few no uses. Well, this was the first one for the month of December, when a lot of people go south. So that's what happens with a lot of these. Um, there was one that read device error, which means sometimes those wires get connected or they get loose, and then the device doesn't read anything. So then the guys go and read it. Um, the one over here, the one you got last time, this big, long number, was that a manual reading? Or was that off of the...
Uh, no, that, uh, we pulled that off the meter itself.
Okay, so sometimes they go in and they will pull a number off the meter, and it's this big, long number. I'll read it to you. Two zero eight two six two four point two. Well, when the computer takes that and puts that in the computer, it would drop and leave just the eight two six. It drops the first two and the last two before the decimal. When we went out and did that on Redmond's house, we didn't know which numbers to drop. So that is why we were saying, oh, there's some, you know, you're using a hundred and thirty-some gallons, thousand gallons, because we didn't know which numbers to drop. The computer knows what's numbers to drop. It drops the last two because it's a hundred factor meter, so it reads in hundreds of gallons. And then in this instance, it drops the first two because it's a long number. I don't know how, why, but it knows what to drop and what not to drop, if that makes sense.
Okay, but a couple council meetings ago, months ago, I should say, back in October, or whenever it was, Tammy, you said that, uh, we had two people up very quick, and you said, that's okay, because they didn't know how to read the meters right anyway.
I don't, I've never said that.
No, well, it's, uh, but beyond video...
I would like to see the recording of that. I would never have said that about my public works employees.
Well...
This is the appropriate time for that conversation, or that's something.
Okay, but my question is, so they went out and reread the meters again. So they got the correct, so they had to go back out and reread that meter again because they weren't read right?
On, on...
On anyone's house, it came up an error, then it wasn't read right.
Yeah, then they go in and they, they take the done back out and get another read. Um, in this case, some of them were exactly the same. Some had a little bit more usage than it did previously. Uh, the device error one, um, the gate, and then there was one where the gate was locked, so they couldn't get in to where the readers...
Also, on this, when we're reading, when, just like if I do this now, and you hit, I hit this, you'll hear a beep. That says it's reading it. If I get a double beep, that means it didn't take it. So that means I'll stop, I'll look at the handheld. Handheld says, no, I didn't get it. It's not get it, so I'll hit it again. And if I don't receive it, I have it on here. I can hit notes and just put in there, device not working. Then that'll, when Bree downloads this, that'll go to that list, and then they'll say, okay, device not working. Then Bree will call that location and say, hey, they're not getting a read. Can they come in and look at it? Then that's when we will look to see if there's wires on the back that are disconnected, or if there's wires that are disconnected on the meter, or somebody's cut it, or it's frail, or if just the meter is not working.
Yeah, this is one of his route notes, or whoever did this one, route notes. Gate is locked, cannot get to meter read. And that way then we know we do have to send the guys out. We call, usually we'll call the people and say, hey, we need your meter moved or something, your gate left unlocked.
If you're doing a signee on your house, is there a certain location you would like that reader to be put at so it would be more accessible or easier for you guys to get at?
We try to do it a little bit above, you know, snow level, if you think about it, you know, just high enough to where it's not gonna get buried, not behind bushes, trees, anything like that. I mean, if you have stuff in your yard, bushes overgrown or stuff like that, that's another thing that we put in notes. You know, if you have a locked gate...
Yeah.
And you don't want us to be back there, animals, you know, anything like that, just let us know. We'll come, we'll run wire, we'll move it for you.
Well, that's gonna be my next question.
Yeah, I mean, just let City Hall know. Um, then they'll let us know. We'll come move it for you.
Yeah, and a lot of time, that's often what happens, is someone gets their house sighted, they take that reader off and it doesn't get put back on.
Or they side over.
It's a skip reading, and, and those will come out on a report, so then the guys will be sent out there to do a reread on it. Um, I had a thought in my head just a second ago, and now I don't remember where it was. Are there any questions? I know it's very basic. Yes.
I just wondered when he's transferring data from the handheld, can it ever get the address wrong?
The addresses are loaded in there, and they're by books. We have four different books of addresses. Um...
That, that's all downloaded off the computer. So basically, when I get this handheld, it, we got, like Tammy said, there's four routes. They're already all loaded on there to where we're supposed to go. It's step by step, house by house, where we're going. So basically, we just look at it, oh, we're going to this house. We're going to the next house.
And then every meter has a serial number?
Yep.
And that number matches up with the number we have in the computer?
Oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
I'm sorry. I, it's been a while since I've done you two.
That makes sense, when you know you've got serial numbers that match.
Yeah, there's a serial number on every meter. Anytime we swap out the meters, we, you know, there's a new serial number to go on it, and that's matches up with what's in the computer. If it doesn't match up, it would, it would be a hinky read and we'd have to send the guys out to reread.
It wouldn't read at all if, if it didn't match.
Yeah.
It would say device error, and it wouldn't read.
So I do have a question then. So if the handheld talks to the computer and then that comes out to your printout, there's no human error?
It, that, that's correct. And that's kind of why I wanted to do this demonstration. There's no human out there writing down numbers, transposing numbers, doing the calculations manually. It, it, it's not how we do water billing at all.
Thank you. That's what I were...
Um, and like I said, when someone gets a high usage, you know, we, we do feel bad for them, but there's really not a lot we can do. I always refer them back to their meter. Look at your meter in your houses. If it's got usage when it shouldn't have usage, if those numbers turned in the middle of the night, even if you flushed the toilet once, there's water going through that meter somewhere. Water actually has to go through the meter to change the numbers. Think of it like an odometer. You know, it's got it, you've got to drive the car to change your odometer. Water's gotta go through that meter to change the numbers.
Every time I go and reverse, my odometer goes backwards.
Does it really?
And toss.
Well, that is true. If water were to go backwards, that would... So, I mean, yes, if that happens, we have a bigger problem.
They came, they came to my house when my meter do go backwards. When they replumb the house, they turned it around and it went backwards and they came out.
Yes, uh, but like when they install a new meter and they install it with the wires backwards, we instantly know that on the first read because it, yeah, it's, it's the weirdest read you ever get. So, yeah, they're sent back and told, yep, you guys gotta fix the, 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 the wires. Um, so... What else do I need to explain about meters? It, there, it, I mean, it's, it's not as complex and not as simple in some ways. Someone is actually physically going to your house. Anytime you get a high usage, like I said, Bree gets a list, she sends the guys out, and then she sends you a letter before you get your bill. She's sending you a letter telling you that you're gonna have a high usage. Um, you know, to kind of give you a heads up or a warning ahead of time. Anytime, there are a rare exception where we do estimate your water. Uh, for instance, the one where if we can't get in the gate at the house and, and to read their meter, we'll estimate based on their last year's average. But then she were required by law to send you a letter saying we estimated your water this month. It happens rarely, a couple times, maybe a year, that we actually have to estimate because we can't get a read. Um, those are the only times we estimate.
Calms it down, red.
Meters are read every month, the first week of the month. Um, there's no deviation on that. We try to keep it to the first week of the month so that it's an average of thirty days between reads. Some months you may have, you know, twenty-eight days of usage. Some months you may have thirty-four days of usage. And that, you wouldn't think that week would create a higher bill than what you're used to, but it, it does. It, it, it makes a difference. Um, I know last time I kind of threw out numbers on how much a drip. Iowa Rural Water Association, and this is, we have these on our desk. A drip the size of a one-sixteenth of an inch, which is really small, but one-sixteenth of an inch over three months could use seventy-four thousand gallons of water. So that's twenty-four thousand gallons of water that a, a continuous drip of a one-sixteenth of an inch. And then it goes up from there. Um, so it doesn't take much to have your...
If you ever make that list, check on your stools, number one. It sounds crazy, but a stool uses a gallon and a half water per flush.
And people think they'll hear it, but you don't almost hear it.
And if it's, if it's leaking between a tank and the hole, you may see a little bit of a trickle in there. Just think about what she just said, because I've had experience where we average using five, six hundred gallons a day in apartments that didn't have anybody in. And that's what, you know, that's typically what it, hot water heaters. Hot water heaters, you don't see every time, every day. And if you get a leak in the bottom of them, yeah, there's a little wetness on the floor and stuff. It's the other one.
And we just have tablets up here in City Hall for toilets.
We have tablets that you can put in your tank of your toilet system, flush it. You'll see, if you see the color come through, then you know it. If you don't want to stop or can't stop up for a tablet, put a little drop of food coloring in your tank. If you see that go through when you flush it, that means there's a leak somewhere.
Well, you know, when you don't flush it, you don't flush it. Don't flush it, it'll, because if you're flushing, it should be running through.
Okay.
If you drop the tablet in there and it's colored in the back tank, and you don't flush it, you see the color coming through, then you have a leak. Another thing I ran into this today, I'm a plumber, I work for a plumbing company in Angling. Customer wanted a motion sense faucet put in, touch faucet. I told them, I go, yeah, they're nice first, but when those battery packs start acting up, those faucets will turn on and off on their own. It could happen in the middle of the night. Your faucet could be running all night long and you won't even know it.
Yeah, in my time here, we had someone that had, um, high usage continuously for maybe six to nine months. It was one of my first years here, and they couldn't, they, they adamantly refused to believe that they had any issues in their house at all. And then their dishwasher fell through their floor because the water had been leaking behind their installed dishwasher. And there was no indication anywhere. It was leaking behind there and until it actually fell through the floor into their basement. Then they went, oh, we have been having water go through something. Go ahead, Nick.
When, up at the congregation, I'm sure we use, our, our normal water bill is the minimum. Couple of years ago, our minimum was like twenty bucks a month. Couple of years ago, our monthly bill was three hundred and fifty dollars because the flappers of both of our toilets went bad. And we don't use our bathrooms enough. You notice that there was an issue. And so we had two bills. It was three fifty and like two seventy-five, two months in a row.
Yeah.
And, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't take long for that to add up because it lapped the end of one month, the beginning of another month before. We got the notice fixed it. So it, it, it adds up fast. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, and then I just have one last question, not to beat a dead horse, truly. But so with the Redmond's, I'm just trying to get this through my head. I don't know if anybody else cares, but... How then, if the numbers drop, I guess I'm just still very confused because that... I don't know. I, I don't, I don't feel like, I don't know. I don't know what happened.
They dropped, they dropped the wrong numbers on the meter.
So the, the... The numbers we gave her with the phones? Yes, those were inaccurate because we were going off the numbers. We didn't know which numbers to give her. So when Brian called her and said, you had a hundred and thirty thousand gallons of usage in the last week, that was wrong. It wasn't, it was based off of the, us trying to do the calculations ourselves without relying on the computer. She wasn't billed based on that number at all.
Well, I thought that they had to do...
Yes, she had about three months' worth of high water bills, and it suddenly went down.
Okay, so my question is, just for the rest of the world in Mitchellville, if that happens again, that could happen again. That is quite, uh, um, it's a situation that could occur again, that this machine, your handheld, could drop two numbers inadvertently, and you won't know what they are. So it could happen to my house or anyone.
No, no, the, the handheld automatically drops the first two numbers based on the type of meter it is. It's, it, it's calculated and it does it automatically. The computer is smart enough to know which numbers to drop. We're the ones who weren't smart enough to know which numbers to drop when we got the number manually.
When she called about the high usage, then we tried to calculate it manually to see what was it, what was happening.
Without using that, because...
Well, it was originally calculated with that.
Because we couldn't have downloaded a new month's worth of, in, in the middle of the month. We couldn't download a new reading for her, so we tried to do it manually.
But if they really hadn't been using a lot, they didn't have a leak from what, and listen, I haven't followed the story up close, it's personal. But if, if it could have happened to them and they say, we didn't really use much, I was out of town for six weeks, or I don't even remember. But my question is...
Their, their meter in their house registered usage.
Yes.
Yeah.
It registered all of that.
So it really could happen to any of us.
If you had water running in your house somewhere, yes.
And it does.
The best way, the best way to, when you go on vacation, you can actually go downstairs. Some of the older houses don't have this, but there's a shut-off valve after the meter and before the meter. So the water coming from, shut the valves off. That way, the water coming from the street that's gonna enter into your meter to go to your house, if you shut it off behind the meter, no water's ever gonna get to your house. So if you do have a leak in your house somewhere and you're out of town, that water's not gonna go through the meter and it's not gonna cause that meter to calculate or run out.
Right.
So if you go on vacation, you shut your water off behind the meter, and it won't do that. If, if a pipe works... If a pipe works burst or a pinhole or whatever you want to say. So, if you go on vacation, that'd be the best scenario, is to shut it off.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead.
It drops the last two numbers.
Yes, it drops the last two.
Okay, because you said the first two.
Well, because they were zeros.
Oh, the first two were zeros also?
Yes.
Okay.
And the one example here is.
Thank you. And our next item we have is a consider for approval, approving a pay rate increase for a public works employee. They got their CDL, it's in our policies that they're supposed to get a fifty cent pay raise.
Motion to approve.
Okay, hold on, I need to back...
I'll second it.
Super, okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Willenbeck?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Calment?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yeah.
Lawler?
Next item is a consider for approval, the memorandum of agreement with Polk County on precinct changes and ward boundaries. So, they changed the voting districts, it did not affect ours.
Yeah, it did not affect Mitchellville, but the county changed their voting districts and the state did, but we have to sign off on it, even though it didn't change ours at all.
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Calment?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yeah.
Roberts?
Yes.
Willenbeck?
Yes.
Lawler?
No.
Next item is to consider for approval, setting the date for a special election to permanently fill the seat vacated by myself, term expiring December...
Thirty-one, yes.
Thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. So, we got the petition, we received that, it's valid. So, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. That's the, they have a date recommended, but I'll go ahead and let Tammy take over about some of that.
Okay, yeah, the county is recommending Tuesday, March twenty-ninth. They prefer that date because Ankeny's also having a special election that day. It does save us some money then because we're not paying the county on a separate date that we... It saves a little bit, not a lot, but it does save some money. So, if there's no objections to Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, that's the date we'll go with. Of course, election location will be here. The candidate filing period starts as soon as you guys approve this, I put January nineteenth. And then you have to have your papers filed if you wish to be a candidate by February fourth. And you need twenty-five signatures, minimum required. And again, it's just like any other election, you file it at the county level, just like previous ones. Okay, well, it's not my bad. I have some job on it that I was...
After that water presentation, they didn't want to drop them all. By the way, can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Elaine, is that okay? That eight? Okay, it's Elaine?
That'll be great.
Yeah, we could know much sooner, it has to be within ninety days. And anybody wanting to run, even if they want to run, you're gonna have to file papers and just run just like a regular election, it's a regular election.
We'll make sure we get the information out on the city's website, city email.
You wanna have a paper, you can pick up right here before you leave. It gives you all the details and the links to the county.
We'll have it posted out front, pretty much everywhere we can, and make sure we get that out as fast as we can.
Probably, well, we have a hand.
Sorry. So, is there a motion to approve setting the date?
Of March twenty-ninth.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Will there be a, do you think we should have a meet the candidates forum like we did prior to...
The city cannot host a meet the candidates forum. That's something that an independent body can do. So, if that's something that...
That was done by Mitchellville Development.
If they want to, they sure can. We can reach out to them and see if they want to do a candid forum.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Roberts?
Yes.
Calment?
Yes.
Willenbeck?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Next item is to receive and review the storm siren.
I included the four separate bids as separate items because they are each like twenty, forty pages long. These, you guys kind of wanted to review them, so they are there.
We're not taking any action on that, just as a tool for everybody to take a look at it and make sure you have it.
Okay, well, you guys could discuss.
Where does the money come from for this?
Uh, just right now, we will have to have that discussion during budget time. Right now, I have the general fund balanced. So, you would have to cut out of general fund accounts. So, that would be the regular ones. Or you could raise the tax levy.
So, currently, our slide is not working, is that correct?
It needs repairing, yeah.
It needs repairing.
It is not working because I have an urgent sense.
Yeah.
It fizzled out that day when it ran forty times consecutively.
Sounds like it's pretty old too, it's over thirty-some years old or better, you know?
So, then with that, is there something that says that a city has to have a storm siren? Are we not in compliance?
No, no, there's...
There is a...
It's not required, no.
Okay, I didn't know. I'm surprised that there isn't a requirement.
Well, it's an outdoor storm siren. Tammy and I had a little discussion about this. Mike, what are cities doing if they don't have a storm siren?
There's rumors that cities are actually buying each resident a Noah...
Weather, what, weather radio?
Weather radio. Whether that's the right answer or not. Whether that's the right answer or not, but I personally like to have some sort of outdoor warning system. This one might be thirty-plus years old, but it's had some maintenance in the last fifteen years. It's been taken off and buried and replaced and such, so it's not that it's been neglected, but it does get used. So, we're one of only two towns in Polk County that still has a new whistle that goes off, so... You know, so ours is used more than other folks.
What's the other town?
Uh, it used to be Rumbles. And I'm not sure if theirs still are. Been a while, I haven't heard theirs for a while, but I know that ours was, I mean, close to every day.
So, you guys are wanting this to get into our budget for fiscal twenty-three, that's something that we're gonna have to figure out how to do it and that's your guys' decisions.
Have we looked into what it would cost to repair the one we have right now?
Bill's looked into it, we haven't gotten it out here yet.
I just looked at it yesterday and found out the chopper owner's bad. It's actually spinning, but it's not making noise.
Well, Brett, when you mentioned the organizations like Epic and the other one, the new one for grants?
Yep.
Is there...
I think that's, I myself think we need to, I mean, I... I think we probably need to do something. I think we probably need to make sure we cover our new housing development if we do it. I think we need to have somebody smarter than us find, help find the money somewhere else.
See, this is a project Ronnie's been working on for probably a year or longer. And I know she has searched for grants as much as she can and hasn't found any right now for storm sirens.
That's why, that's why I asked the question, what are towns doing? Because that just doesn't, if there's not grants and there's not, you know, so many times we're able to call a different city or even the league of cities and they give us a clue, "This town just did this, here's how they got the money." I mean, I don't want to cause the fire department to have chili suppers in July or anything, but... I think we need more, I think we need more time to figure this thing out.
Well, and it seems like they're, you know, the sirens are now more...
Outslee.
No, more accurate, no, more...
Oh, used.
More used for the tornado warnings, you know, for the actual emergency.
Since they started doing high winds over seventy mile an hour. And that's important.
For this, yeah, for this actual tornado siren, for early...
But they're still only outdoor warning.
It certainly makes people feel more safe too. You know, we're having this new housing development with small kids, you know, people want to be alerted to potential bad weather. So, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but, you know, we definitely need to figure out a way to come up with funds.
It's just crazy expensive.
Yeah, it is.
Well, that's for three, we could buy one at a time, spread it over three years.
You know, and we've looked at cities in Iowa with our population and thinking, maybe we should look more towards the, you know, the tornado alley. Like maybe the Kansas, you know, maybe the Tennessee, maybe there's a community out there that has, yeah, I don't know. I'm just...
It's a good idea, Nick.
How many people in this room are on the NICSOL Alert system that gets a text or an email in bad weather? I mean, I know that's, I, I like getting those, that's how I would be alerted, but...
I don't see us finding money in the budget this year for it. So, I think it's, we're just gonna have to keep plugging away and hopefully we can find some funding.
I agree.
Anybody else have anything they want to add about this?
All right.
Talk about that later. I'm ready to...
Well, we're gonna get the existing one fixed.
That, that sounds good. And then, our next item is approve our motion, police vehicle trade with State Center. It's requested by Chief Spore. Derek?
So, two months ago, I brought up the idea about the A-Dell vehicle. Basically, that's just to give our 2016 Explorer to the City of State Center and returns, we get a 2016 Explorer back that has thirty thousand less miles, a little bit nicer taken care of. So, in the long run, hopefully that'll save us some maintenance costs on it. So, we just need to have it in there that they get the title and we get the title and we're done.
I have a motion to approve a vehicle trade.
Any other discussion?
Is there like an inspection or whatever to, just to make sure that they're properly installed?
We had Williamson's look at it, they will need a front hub, so it'll have a little bit of maintenance. But ours reluctantly, the alternator went out the day before we were gonna move the trade. So, we had to, we had to pay for that too. But outside of a little bit of maintenance, it's a solid running vehicle. So, hopefully we'll get some new use out of it.
How many miles a year are you putting on these cars?
So, we average right around twenty-five thousand. We do have mileage restrictions. I try to tell the guys to keep it about seventy-five miles a night because anything over, we kind of rack the miles up pretty hard. So, a couple times if they're over a hundred miles, you know, you've kind of got to have a reason why. So, we try to sit right around seventy-five miles a night, because it's about twenty-five thousand a year. So, you figure within five years, that's a hundred thousand. But what kills our cars is the high line. And then we have working a car Chevrolet. It'll cost a little bit of money, so I'll wait till July one to do that. But we're going to put a power burner in the back of the car. And then when they're at the office, we'll plug the car in, you can shut the car off and everything stays charged. So, that way, you can keep the car off, take it home and do the work. And if you get a call, we will come out to a vehicle that's in service. So, and that'll, that'll kill down the Iowa highway. So, this Ford has it every hour of the car. Iowa's is about thirty miles per hour.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Roberts?
Yes.
Willenbeck?
Yes.
Calment?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Department has, Mike, what do you got?
Fire Department is, as usual, we did receive four tablets to go to replace our current computers in our vehicles. That was through a grant through Polk County, through the state, I believe.
And eBay.
And eBay, so they're just gonna be a little bit of associated cost of getting those installed, but we've got some, some good technology, some updated technology, we're gonna get that installed pretty soon. I have one individual that just started EMT class, so still very excited about that. And we're pushing along.
Matt?
Parks Rec, it's a fun time of year, getting everything ready, set, setting dates, figuring out what we're gonna do, what new stuff we're bringing in for next year. So, we'll have a calendar coming out pretty soon. All of our core events like party in the park, movies in the park, youth soccer, those sorts of things, we have dates set. So, that calendar should be coming out very shortly. We're putting together a organized silver cord hour program so we can work with Southeast Polk, get applicants and a pool of volunteers that we can work with. And those kids get, you know, two hours a week, they come to the park, they meet with me, we do some park chore type stuff. And then those people have first dibs at some of our more fun, exciting events as opposed to just throwing it out to anybody. These guys, they'll be in an exclusive club, they get a first dibs at all the fun stuff. So, we got that in the works. The big snow was not very nice to our ice. So, top layer, bottom layer, nice little blanket of warmth in between. So, we got a lot of melt from the snow and the stuff that was on top froze, so it was really heavy and hard to get off there. So, we got off there, but it created a nice little step. So, I half flooded it today, I'll finish flooding it tomorrow. And hopefully after the next cold snap, I'll be able to get out there, Zamboni that guy and have it smoothed back out. But it's definitely a lot of effort goes into keeping that usable. So, bear with me, it's gonna take a little bit to get it back to its super smooth icy surface, but it's coming, we'll get there. And that's... What's that?
It's gonna be a cold cap starting tonight.
Yeah, that's why I got, I threw a thousand gallons on it today. And then tomorrow, I'll, I'll finish it up and, you know, it should be all right.
Adam?
Uh, for Public Works, we've got the truck fixed and it's back up and operational. As, as for that, nothing else, we're doing pretty good.
Derek?
I'll piggyback, Adam, you guys did a good job cleaning the roads. We only issued, I believe, two Snordenant violation citations, which is pretty good. So far, for January, we've had a hundred and twenty-four calls. And like Chief Tuohy said, we also got four tablets through the grant, which is a pretty nice, on top of the technology. We are starting a new software to document our use of forced vehicle pursuits, complaints, compliments, and awards, so that way we can kind of move forward a little bit better. We're also joining Polk County with their new RMS software, which will be good because a lot of individuals we deal with also come from Des Moines. So, we'll be able to communicate and work with metro agencies a little bit more efficiently. So, we're moving forward technology-wise. Ben is doing very well, he's passed his first test. He's trying not to be the smartest guy in the class, but it's not working very well for him. And I think he's down to fourteen more weeks and I can't wait, so...
Ellen?
Um, every Wednesday, we have a program after school. We start a new reading challenge in February that'll go until like May, but there's a good prize at the end. And Spider-Man will be there in March in our summer reading program.
Well... Brett?
I got a couple things, since I've had a liaison in the library now, I just wanted to give a brief update. It was a meeting on the night, it was a very quick meeting. We welcomed the new board member, Gloria Burme. Also, the library, they're closed on Mondays anyway, but it's gonna be closed on the twenty-sixth of this month. Dug up the new generator. And I'd like to say congrats to Ryan on taking a new position. And also, I just wanted to second what somebody else had mentioned just a few moments ago. Big thanks to Public Works, all the guys, that was a lot of hard work, removing all that snow. So, great, great job. Thank you very much for y'all, your hard work. Thank you very much for y'all your hard work. That's all I got.
Andrew?
The only thing I have is, um, the community center is having, um, a monthly dinner this Friday night. It's a turkey and noodle dessert, drink, uh, free will donation from five to seven. Hope you can make it.
Bill?
Uh, I would like to mention that I assisted Matt, uh, filling the ice rink, and how clear the water was. What, what Public Works is doing is working, and replacing all these pipes is working. Cause a couple of years ago, I helped and it didn't look so nice, colored nice.
All right.
Um, no, nothing with this time.
Tammy?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Uh, we had a great P and Z meeting last Tuesday on kind of the rules and what P and Z should do and should not do, and kind of help on ends. Also, dealing with annexation, um, I think it was a great presentation by ISU. I was glad that, uh, almost all my P and Z members were there and the council members. I, I, I hope y'all got a lot out of it. I know I did. Um, Thursday, I have a meeting with our I C A P insurance. Iowa D O T finally paid on our wastewater treatment facility from a year and a half ago. They've been, they've owed us a hundred thousand dollars for a year and a half. We got the money in January, finally, so that fund will be on the hole here for that project. That was awesome. Um, I have a webinar, uh, through the League of Cities on February tenth regarding the new infrastructure funding bill. What are, if there's any options for us, so I will be attending that.
Is there a bill yet?
I don't know. They've just announced the webinar, so I signed up for it today, so hopefully it'll be informative. Um, I think that's all I have right now.
Uh, I went to the P and Z meeting and the training with ISU on the eleventh as well. I had mayor's meeting at Drake University on the twelfth, so I was able to, uh, meet a lot of the other mayors in the area, and I think that was a real eye-opening experience. The thirteenth, I had, uh, mayor training with the Iowa League of Cities on Zoom. I have some more in February through them. And we have a Iowa's mayor call on Zoom next week with, uh, the Iowa Mayors Association of the League of Cities just started. That's all I got.
Is there anyone in the public, the audience that'd like to address the council? Come on up, please.
Allen Brookview, one thirteen Second Street Northwest. I'd like to see somebody on the council, uh, place on the agenda, conversation or discussion as to, uh, having a public audience also earlier in the meeting, very early, because between, all we can do at this time, if something has been passed, is to say, I don't like it. Uh, but if it's early in the meeting, we can say, well, I see this is coming up. Uh, I'm wondering, did you check on this, 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 this? We have a chance to have an input, but other than like now, there is no input. This is our town. Thank you.
Thanks, Scotty. Anybody else? Come on.
Hi, my name's Elaine Webb. I live at three oh one Third Street Northeast. And to Public Works, you, they did a great job on the roads. We had a lot of snow, and you guys just did super, so they're beating to it, so, um, thank you so much for that. I put it on Swap Mitchell, appreciate you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
And then, um, my question is, when the heads of the departments, like the fire department, gives like, oh, we have thirty calls this month. Can they break that down and how many calls did Mitchell respond to? How many calls did Altoona and Bonnerant respond to in our town? I know Derek breaks his down into this category, this category, and this category. He's got several. So, can the fire department break theirs down as, okay, we have this call, but Altoona came to answer it, or Bonnerant, or we answered it?
I'm, I'm sure they could. I'm sure Mike's got all those numbers.
Just a.
I think Matt's got something down.
Apparently, the calls for service only include the calls that have been covered.
But then how come they don't?
The calls that have to be covered by Altoona or Bonnerant don't factor into our call volume numbers. They go to Altoona, Bonnerant's call volume numbers, and their report and everything in the computer goes to them. So, when we pull our numbers and say we've had four hundred and twenty-five calls of service, those are our calls that they responded to that we covered.
Okay, and then, then Bonnerant, like, if Bonnerant needs to come to the nursing home, then Bonnerant gets that call?
Yes.
That's nice to know, because I've never known that before.
Yep.
So, I didn't know if I had to audit or claim whatever, but anyway, that's nice to know. So, that's my, that's good answer, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, our next item is to go into the work session for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, so everybody can get in place for what they have to do, and those that don't want to stick around through the budget can leave. We'll go ahead and take a five-minute break and be back at seven fifty-six. Thank you.
Happy belated birthday.
Do you guys try all their time?
Yeah, I think you must find somebody in that place.
I guess, but I mean, that's like. I actually gave it memories. I don't remember where we left off, but we skipped over rec and park, so we'll do part of the rec.
Yeah, but it's.
So, I have a starting format on page sixteen. Yeah, that'll be the start of the rec, and then, part is on nineteen, and I don't, I don't remember where we started to stop. Does anybody remember what we were discussing when we stopped? Usually, I make a note, but I did not. Did we stop, stop right at park? Yeah, it made sense. That's right.
We did the miscellaneous and the general fund. Yeah, we went.
Well, you did, you did general fund revenues miscellaneous, page seventeen. Yes, so you did page seventeen, eighteen, and then we're thinking we stopped at the top page of nineteen, or we started at parks? Okay. So, we, since park and rec, we're kind of tying together. We're gonna do those together, even though they're on separate pages, so sixteen and nineteen.
Bro, what? Free shipping, and I had to do two days. I, I've learned, I've learned how to bargain shop compared to that.
I was gonna drive through.
Swishy pants. Who's doing the hammer dance? Uh, that's, that's just what completely over my head. I used to have hammer pants when, when the eighties, because that was in the eighties, and I was in college. I don't know if we have any pictures of us. Probably wore in college then. All right, are we ready to start?
Yep.
Page sixteen, and we're gonna look at the little part on nineteen and dozens of parks at the same time as we go to Matt's on sixteen.
Why did I have next through the? He must have copied my notes. Hey, hey.
All right, so looking through Matt's, uh, city rec programming expenses, revenues, those first three lines, it's just a number I plug in. Really, it's really hard to say how much Matt's gonna bring in in the year, so we don't estimate too high. In fiscal twenty-one, he brought in ten thousand, seven hundred. Um, this year, so far, he's at five thousand. These are in most of his programmings, like registrations for cornhole and registrations for soccer and, and then, there's usually expenses tied to it, so it's not that that's all profit. So, that's why really the amount that we put in for revenue was kind of something that can be changed, because, like I said, it's not a really good, easy budgetable item. So, I'm skipping straight to expenses, cause that's really the crux of everything. Um, Matt's, uh, the first line there is the regular full-time, and that's Matt's pay, the part that comes out of rec, not the part that comes out of fire. Regular part-time is Matt is requesting a part-time employee that would be year-round, and that would help him with all of his programs, all his events, all of his activities. I think it is a good idea, cause that way we can keep having fun things going on in town, and he does need help. So, that is what that figure is in there. The fifteen thousand is for a part-time parks and rec employee as a year-round position, working less than twenty hours a week. I don't know how many hours, you know, during the, sometimes it won't be much, sometimes it'll be more. And if that's something you guys want to discuss, we can.
The Mac could have a day off. In there.
You can have someone helping him with his ice rink, yeah. Um, you know, this is not a position we've advertised for yet. This, you know, I don't know what we'll get. It was a similar when we put that out for Matt. I didn't know what we would get. We got something pretty good, so I'm hoping we can find someone, uh, a part-time person that can work pretty good for Matt and do a lot of the odds and ends. Um, you know, even if it's just cleaning the bathroom for him, so that's not a daily chore he has to do anymore, dumping the garbage cans, or, um, if we get a person that wants to run a new event or ever.
And what's that? So, fifteen grand, twelve months. How'd you come up with that?
Um, let me see what I did. I don't remember. I'm gonna do payroll. Rec assists at fifteen dollars an hour is what I did.
Is that twenty hours a week? If we can have an employee like that.
Yes, that's a twenty hours a week, sorry.
Shouldn't we kind of make sure they're universal?
Universal as in what?
Can be a lot more public works when they have an absentee.
It, it's hard. I mean, public works. Yeah, public works is someone that needs to know how to run a plant, what, work at the plant, take samples, do that kind of stuff. Um, you know, it, it's kind of hard to find someone that wants to clean the park bathroom or run a soccer program that can also work the water plant. A lot there.
But you might, maybe blow or something.
We do have a, a, a work label now that we do a moment.
I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid of telling somebody they need to learn something new.
Well, sure can, but I mean, public works will learn something new. It's, uh, cost classes, and we have to send them the stuff, and it's online testing, and, I mean, it's something we could share with the owners. On expand that area.
Well, I know that. I know that. But like I'm saying, summertime, and we have two guys calling, turn them on. Can that person go run the mower?
A mower would be something. I can do that.
Can we ask them to get the C D R and potter river? Shovel the park?
What kind, what kind of responsibilities are they gonna do?
Uh, so, with the growth of my department, adding additional events, I'm busy, full-time hours plus through the entire year. So in the summertime, I'm working well over twenty hours just doing our everyday events. So pretty much through the entire summer, I have something going on parks and rec every night of the week. So during the day, I do all the maintenance activities, all the prep work for upcoming events, all the advertising and all the Facebook, social media posts, which I don't get nearly as much of that stuff out there as I would like to do. Um, but park bathrooms, we do three times a week. Uh. Maintenance, uh, help with all programs. So every event that I host, um, there'll be hands. All those items.
Okay.
And anything else like. And other duties as.
Deciding.
As just an idea.
The parks committee, we did kind of talk a little bit about, um, possibly being able to do, um, more of the ball field maintenance in-house as opposed to literally having to do that. That might be something that we might expand out into. If this person had the time.
I mean, you want to find the right person, so you gotta be a little bit careful, but I'm just. I'm just saying. I would free up some time in the city hall as well, because I know Ronnie helps with putting out some of those social media posts and some.
If I had somebody to do some of my maintenance items and things, I could take over a lot of stuff that I have heard you. I have to do myself. Show more money thanks to him, Sam. Girl, Bill's over here.
No, it's all be at Park's rec. You guys are.
Uh, if you don't really have any questions to give out or do not want us to hire another position, as council, you approve all new positions, so this would be a new position. So if you don't want that, speak now and we'll take it out.
Even if we approve this, we're gonna have a discussion about what they're gonna do.
Yes, because this is just approving the budget. This is not approving the actual position yet. It'll have to come to you at another time. Similar to when we started Matt is we approved it in the budget, we put the money there, but then you have to approve the position and kind of the job description and that kind of stuff. Is that the rate of pay? Um, Matt has a city phone, so that's what that tele- telecommunication line item is, the five hundred and ten dollars. Um, his social programming, um, that is what he wants to be able to spend on events this summer or this year, not just this summer, sorry, Matt. He's got some ideas. He can he can speak on them if he wants.
What you want to do? So as this department has grown, I have not asked for anything since I started. I have not have said, I need this much money or I'm gonna walk home. I done none of those things, but I have shown you what I can do with very limited resources, which I feel have been good, but we can do better. Uh, I can add more programming, more more things for more people. Um, but just for example, uh, events and programming that we had just over the last year. We had party in the park, bags league, youth soccer, trivia, bill stock, farmer's market. Uh, we tried to do dodgeball and kickball, but I think bad time here. Uh, movies in the park. Uh, we participated in Thomas Smith's host bags league. Uh, for that, uh, we have a community service program that we do through the county. Uh, people who need community service can come to me. I put them to work, they get hours. Uh, we have our silver court hour program that we've always had, but we're going to make it more organized coming up like I talked about. Uh, we had rise and grind, and those are just the events. And it seems like when I do an event, the successful ones stick. So I did it last year, people are gonna see it this year. So all these are coming back. Uh, we also did several, um. That's all. But anyway, uh, this year, I want to expand on a lot of our events. I want to add a Fourth of July celebration. Um, I want to add, uh, and expand our soccer program. It was really good last year. Um, a lot of good turnout, a lot of a lot of good feedback from that. So we definitely want to improve upon that. We want to, uh, I also have added winter programming. Uh, now that we're working with the community center, I have trivia, uh, it's running right now. Last time was kind of a really bad day to do it for the first ones, because we had.
A storm.
Monster. So, you know, uh, it was really good practice. I'll just say that much, and I didn't use my presentation for trivia next time because nobody can. But people will come to the next one. Uh, but we've added that. I'm looking at dates with the community center, trying to work with them to figure out some time to also do, uh, bingo and, uh, indoor bags. Just turn that one time thing. But we're trying to work together to pick dates that they're not booked and it makes sense to do so, so. First of all, I can I can see increases in the budget, but I think that that increase is pretty huge from last year. I mean, this is for council to discuss more than me, but it's a pretty big increase.
It is.
Uh, just the social programming line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty nine thousand.
When you're working your twenty hours, what hours are you working a day?
Whatever hours I need to to get things accomplished. I don't.
Because it seems like you're working every night in a lot of situations.
I do, and I work during the day, uh, during the day. No matter what I'm doing for the park, I'm gonna call for the fire department for my twenty. Um, but that also goes well outside of the twenty hours a week range. So I work daytime, nighttime, weekends, weekend days, weekend nights, holidays. I do a lot of stuff, a lot of time. So for me to tell you what my exact time is, you know.
Most of the program, uh, most of the programs you, um, also have are kind of self-sufficient, aren't they? You bring in a and a fee for a person or a team to be involved in.
I try. I try for my four, like bags league and things like that. I try to make them break even. At least. So, yes.
So the thirty-five thousand though is going for other.
Would that be to bring in like bands and things like that?
Yes. Yep. Bring in, uh, more live music, bring in more, uh, like for like the carnival. More to increase the things that we have at these events.
It doesn't seem like it's quite a bump up there.
It is going to bump up there, but.
Increase of twenty-five thousand, yes, that is that is an increase. Um, but just for instance, if he hadn't had money left in his budget this year for partying in the park to bring in the carnival, he wouldn't have been able to bring it in. They needed the money. You know, so even though we're gonna make some money off the event, he needed the money in his budget line item to be able to make it happen.
Yeah, because a lot of the things like I'm doing right now with the tail end of my last fiscal budget is to set up, uh, book dates. I have to pay deposits on carnivals and bands and to get the dates that I want before other places have them booked. So we'll be able to bring in, uh, bigger names and lock in our dates for the following year.
And if that number is a little too high for you, you sure can lower it, and then through the year, if he does bring in revenue, then it'd be part of our budget amendment where we could put money back in an expense line item for him. So for instance, if he has a big event and brings in ten thousand dollars, you guys could put that money back in as an expense line for him to use with a budget amendment in that that fiscal year. Did I explain that good enough? So if you wanted to lower it for now, you could put money back in there.
Are you having a difficult time right now trying to get your programs set for the summer? And that's why, I mean, you have an amount that you say you have to have so you can go through with the program. Do you already have it on you, like to book bands or is this just a?
Party in the park was the hard one to make sure we had money to budget for, but that was. That was in June. It's gonna be at the end of this budget.
Right, that's right at budget change, so that one gets a little more. The water's a little muddier there because, you know, we're finishing up and, uh, but. I'm not having problems booking these things and getting them set up if I want to stay at the level of entertainment and activity that we're at. But. Our community's growing, my department is growing. I like to take what I've already done and every year improve upon it. So if I don't have the funding to improve upon it, it'll just stay here. I, uh. Right. When when Tammy brought this forward two years ago?
I think it was three years ago that I started and, yeah.
I was. I was I was not a fan. I voted for it eventually.
He didn't want you.
We've been.
I've told I've told Matt I've told Matt this story. He's not the only one.
And I wasn't.
And then and then when that got started, I was like, oh man. And I will just tell you that this is the shining light of any discussions I have in the public. And I'll be honest with you, we don't have enough track record to say no. And I've been delighted and I'm gonna say yes. I appreciate that. One of the things is is that I've done my budget when I first came through the door, Tammy says, well, you got like three hundred and twenty-five bucks.
That was what was in it when I hired him. Yeah.
And and in that, we did party in the park, farmer's market, we did bags league, we added more equipment to the park, and I worked with that money. And I didn't complain, I didn't ask for anything, I didn't throw a fit and say, well, I can't do my job. I just showed you I can do my job. Then my budget went up and I increased everything, I improved everything, I made more, I brought more people in, I did bigger events, and I did that in the face of COVID and everything else going on. I followed guidelines and I made sure that we were doing what we were supposed to do as a city, but I also grew the department. I also grew our events, and I didn't ask for more than either. And I didn't ask more for these last year. And I again drew all our programs, I had soccer last year. I I don't care that I work every single night of the week. You know, I get so pride out of that. I really enjoy my job and the opportunity to do this for our community. But I've done all that without asking for much. Could you imagine what we can get done if we approve this? If I had any help, that's when the light will fade.
Let's keep that on. Let's keep looking at that, but let's go to the two other items in this budget. Um, the vehicle, uh, fifteen thousand dollars is what he thinks he can buy in a truck for. Um, he has a truck that the city bought him for three hundred dollars.
Three hundred bucks. Got a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on her and the rest approved it.
And our thoughts are, is the part timer maybe would need to be able to transport stuff around, work and that kind of stuff, so we put him into three hundred dollar truck and.
Part timer's probably gonna have to get a C D R.
No, might have to. Um, and then Matt had put in a request for other capital expenditures, and I had took that out, and that's going into the park budget. So we'll discuss that as soon as we get to the park side of it. Because I think they are in charge of or should be in charge of the capital expenditures for actual equipment and that kind of stuff.
I've talked with Matt quite quite a few times up at the park, and he's got some brand ideas and I'm all for it. I think it's, uh. Whoa. Why are you laughing at that?
Man, I I'm not kidding you. I'm not kidding you. It's it's been an amusement ride since Tammy brought this idea forward. I've been doing it.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of big improvements.
I have too.
At the park, you know, we go we try, we go up there at least a couple of times a week and and there's been some really big changes, and we've only been here seven years. I can about imagine, you know, somebody that's spent their entire life here and and at the time that that Matt has, uh, better on the departments.
I will say this much, from the time I was a kid and how excited I got for stuff going on in the community, I'm that excited again.
It's not his kids. That's the great part about, but.
There's a lot of great things that.
Yeah, he's trying to target all ages. He's got.
You've got a great child.
Better get that advertising and get to bring more people in.
Yeah, that's another part of this money.
You know, have more time for the.
And the part time.
No, no. We'll just leave it as in and move on. So if you want to flip to page nineteen real quick, that is the top half of that is just the parks budget. Um, most of the stuff is their standard, what we need to operate the park, like electricity, um, vehicle repair is the mowers. So none of that really changed much. And their, um, payments to agencies is the money that the park board gets to use. The rest of that is kind of what city hall and what's, um, public work uses when they do work at the park. So they are asking for sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, it's up from their last year's budget, but they have some specifics that they're asking for. One is they want to build a stage, a permanent stage for all Matt's events. Um, so you're looking at a concrete stage with lighting, electricity, um, permanent stage down there, and their estimate is it's gonna be forty-two thousand. Um, they want to do upgrades and improvements to Killenger Park for eight thousand. We don't have details. I told him, just tell me about what you think you want to do there. They have some ideas, but eight thousand is what they want to spend at Killenger Park. They've got a final concrete pad they have to put at the ball field for ten grand, and then they're asking for five thousand, which is kind of their recurring annual expenses that they spend every year on, um, the disc golf and the the equipment up there or something, you know. That's kind of their annual expenses. So that's where they came up with the sixty-five thousand. As you can see, Matt had part of that. He had thirty-five thousand in his budget for capital equipment, and I took that out because that was for a stage. So if the park board is gonna spend the money on the stage instead, that's where I put the money.
Where where are you putting that located from? So yeah, where the tennis court area was, uh, where I set up the trailers for all the events. So facing, uh, east at the bottom of the hill. And, uh, just a little bit about this stage. This stage is thirty-five feet by twenty-five feet, um, two foot high, but this stage is also full concrete, forty-eight inch cross footings. It's going to be made where it's gonna be there after all of us are gone. Facing the east, don't you want the hill to be able to watch them?
Not if you have an A concert there.
So I've had I've had enough events up there and set things up this way, that way, differently. That.
Keith, what are you saying? I that way the music goes out of the county and it does not come back in, so like later events.
Yeah, but it faces north and I get the list. It's at all.
You know, most people are on the other side of the interstate.
Just asking.
And you save money on tickets.
You got carros right near the roadway. But the way that it sets up the acoustics of that area, since the hill is here, and then you have the hill up towards the off field. Uh. Do we have parks coming in later to talk to us?
No.
This is it.
This is, uh, yeah, I'm kind of representing parks. Will was on it when we discussed it. So he could he could speak on it if he had any questions.
Eight eight grand in Killenger, forty grand.
In the stage, ten thousand for the final concrete pad at the ball field and five thousand for the recurring expenses. Yeah, they put one in underneath the bleachers this last year for seven thousand, I think. Now they've got the big one that they have put one under.
I'm not sure what Killenger is. It's for a carpenter.
It's a little bit cross footed.
Yeah, they, do you remember any of the ideas they talked about? Oh, Matt does, okay.
So at Killenger, the roofs on most shelters need to be replaced. Okay, they're a very important here. Um, I want to take the infamous park fountain, make that a focal point in this park. I will do the work, revamp it, clean it up, but I want to set it here so it is a focal point. I'd like to take the Killenger Park sign that's here and not replace it. I don't know the history of it, but it's set way back and you can't see it. I'd like to get that a little closer to the road within our ordinances and guidelines, uh, and add to that, add light to it so people know, hey, this is a park and this is what the park's name is, this is why it's here. That's the big park thing. That's the big park thing. You see, if you're just cruising through town and not looking for something, that's, that's, hey, look at us. And right now, it's, hey, look at the other side of the street. That's his house. Can your, can your staff recommendations?
Yes.
How much needs to come out of this batch to make it work?
It's a balanced budget right now with this money.
Is your staff recommendations?
Yes.
Also flower beds and.
So Killenger Park doesn't include a fire sire under them?
No.
You can see how I get confused. It's going somewhere. There needs to be a line. Why is there no insurance?
Um, I haven't charged the park for insurance for a while.
Okay.
It's.
But they're insured.
Yes, all of, all of the city insurance.
Cause this sounds like they're not insured.
All of the, all of the property insurance in the city, I divvy it up between each of the departments. And then like city hall takes the majority of it and so the public works, um, just because we have the money. And then it's also a separate line item is insurance. So it's, it's divvied up.
Just the top cover.
Yeah. Um, most of the other insurance line items like or, um, please fire and library is their work comp insurance.
What will the stage be used for other than bands matter? Will that strictly be?
Oh, I can, it can be used for, uh, if Tammy had a really good idea. Because some of the, uh, high school, uh, show choir stuff had been canceled and they can't do their program. So we would reach out to groups like that. They wanted to use our stage. The Thomas Mitchell days can use our stage. Uh, I would obviously use our stage quite a bit with the live music and the things like that that I wanna add to it. Uh, like just for example, um, parting the park this year, we're going to be hosting at Mitchell County Town. That would be in that same area. If we had the stage by then, we sure use it for that. Um. Anything, anything we can figure out to put on that stage, I'll use it for.
Did you say it had a roof and a back to it? I mean, a surround at all?
No, this, this stage is just the platform. So subsequent budgets later, that is something I'd like to do. A back and a front and.
Electrical and things like that. Electrical and things like that?
Yes. This, this will have electrical with outlets. Cause when I had the last phase of electrical put down to the shed in that side of the park, I had to put junctions there with this intended use for labor. So.
Do we have any vandalism at the park with, with the shed and all down there? No, it's down there?
Since, since we've got a bigger presence at the park, we've had less vandalism than we did in the past. I mean, that's a good.
I spend a lot of time trying to advocate to the people that are in the park, uh, especially, you know, people of break stuff age. Uh, I, I, I make friends. I try to go and talk to folks and, uh, know what we're doing. I'm happy I am seeing the park using those facilities and, you know, that, that goes a long way. And, uh, you know, keeping our facilities nice. And, you know, we've had, like, the garbage cannot go or, you know, we've had small things.
Yeah, not, at least a couple of sub days.
I really don't think that was because of that. I think it was, just from the look of it, I think somebody got in a fight with her little girlfriend or something and just got mad and punched my service. I gotta do one in the yard.
We saw security cameras down here. Yes. We have security cameras down there.
There is a camera down there?
I have four. Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't show in, obviously it does not show aside where the soap got broken. They're on the.
So are we wanting utility parks as it is? Or do you guys wanna make any changes?
I want the stage, can I rent, or are we expecting Google to rent the stage? That is, that is a potential. We could use our venue and rent it to other folks that wanna host a.
Weddings or whatever.
A wedding or, I'd love if people got married in our park. That would be like, I said it before, that's one of the, you know, the day that people try to book the park for a wedding, that's gonna be when, when they're on the map. But that's a side note, sorry. I won't get married in our park.
I'm gonna wedding in our apartment.
But yeah, the, uh. So the more revenue that we can bring in from the use of our facilities, even if it is off a third party, like renting shelters and that sort of thing, absolutely. That will be something that we would like.
Okay, and we want, we to make any changes or adjustments to the park's budget at this time? You guys will revisit it when we put it all back together for you.
Okay, I think that sounds good. Just, I really am concerned about the sirens and so that's just kind of, it's hard for me when I really wanna come up with a line for that, so.
And I can, I, I will play, after we get through all this, before I print you all another one, I will try to play around and see how much. Even if we set aside half of it this year and half of it next year or something along that line.
Just trying to work towards it. Thank you.
Well, I'll see what I can find in, in extra money. Otherwise, let's move along. Cause we all have a lot of money to be on. Sorry, Matt.
One last thing. Sorry, I didn't know. But, uh, you know, our current siren, in spite of all this and new sirens, those things, this one will be fixed and we're back up operational. So we won't be without one because of this.
That's what we, that's what we force bring.
So after parks is cemetery. We'll just keep going on page nineteen. Let's put that there for the rent.
Just last year we talked about that. Be a more of a prior.
Yes, you can go back to your seats.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Cemetery is pretty set. I have, um, tentatively changed it a little bit in that we won't hire out the cemetery really. That we will do that in-house since we do have a laborer position now, um, that will give him something to do during the summer. So I made a little slight change there. So took out the twenty-two thousand four hundred in payments to agencies and instead bumped up staff. Regular part-time, it's nineteen thousand six fifty-six is what I've got allocated to cemetery to cover that salary.
Where is that at?
Um, but right now it's cemetery where I said regular part-time and it was zero because we didn't have any there. I put nineteen thousand six fifty-six and took out the twenty-two thousand four hundred as payment to agencies. One of the reasons being, um, the, the person that did the cemetery last year is not gonna be able to do it this coming season. Um, they were very awesome, um, at working that cemetery. We had the most compliments we ever had. I was going to go ahead and hire them, but health reasons, they're not gonna be doing the cemetery or not available. So, um, next, best case scenario for me is to do it in-house because then I think I get the attention and detail that I want. So we will probably be training Lane to do the cemetery primarily. Um, it'd be a good position for him to do as a laborer. Oh, has he? So that is how the cemetery is setting. There's not a lot of changes you can make to the cemetery budget because there's just not a lot of money there other than mowing is the big, big expense. Any questions on the cemetery portion? Trees, again, it's hard to make a budget for how many trees we're gonna remove and at what cost it will be to us this year. Um, we've already spent fourteen thousand this last fall in removing a bunch of trees. But again, I, I keep that budget small just cause we don't know.
Where does the income from the, you know, all of their tree budget?
Yes, that's not general fund money. So that's not in here at all.
And even though this was those trees?
These, this fourteen thousand of trees this year was not demo related trees. This was, um, the trees, there were a couple on mill, one on arch, two on arch. One in the cemetery. Trying to remember the list. It was about seven trees that we had removed on, on the city roadway. So they were dead trees that people, residents had complained about and wanted us to remove them. And so the tree board approved removing them. Other cultural room is just a few dollars, five hundred there for Thomas Mitchell days, five hundred for city beautification. It's, that's what we did. The beaver hustlers, um, flower pots. We did two fifty this year. I put five hundred in there just because I took two fifty out of social programs. Munity beautification, this line item is the line item we use when we have to do, um, nuisance properties, property cleanups, that kind of stuff. Um, this year we've spent almost forty-seven hundred already in property cleanups. Fiscal twenty and nineteen, we spent fourteen thousand over those years. I, I'm recommending the ten thousand. Is that what I still have there? I've already, I lowered it to ten. But that's, you'll, you'll get nothing. No, and, and I mean, we do get some of that money back, but we don't get it all back. Yeah.
That's our Main Street money sometimes.
No, no, this is not our Main Street money.
It will be.
I have more Main Street money coming up.
Oh, Killenger Park's on Main Street.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so is that fire sign.
We're gonna get through general fund tonight, guys. Economic development, uh, eight thousand dollars there. That's the association dues that we've paid every year. I'm leaving that there. Hopefully we'll be paying a big and, uh, go from there. Um, planning, zoning, uh, we've got engineering fees and we're gonna have, continue to have more engineering fees. As you can see in the past, we've only ever budgeted like a couple hundred dollars. So, but there's a thousand there because we're gonna have engineering fees every time we have to have a plat, a food or check for Kimberly development. Now we get to you guys, council. I don't think I made hardly any changes there from prior years. Your pay is set at six thousand, uh, for all seven of you, six of you. Uh, association dues, it's usually around six to seven, eight hundred dollars. Just depends on how many associations that you guys are in. Um, the mayor's, there's like three there, I think that we, we pay the dues on. Travel conferences is five hundred. That covered the MLA classes. Nick has expressed interest in attending more classes, so we might want to up that. So if you guys want me to try to find some money in, to up that, I will do a correction and get that updated or get that, get that increased.
If we could, someone to give us opportunities to.
Yeah.
Some more people up here as well. I don't wanna be the only one doing this training.
No, so I will, yeah, I will get some more travel and conference money put in the budget for him. I mean, I'm sorry, we won't have anyone go to MLA because we won't have a conference. In fiscal twenty-three, we won't have an election. You have five hundred, but that's not quite enough if you're having to do a hotel stay. Um, contracted services, that is iPads that we pay for. There's, you can't change it. The beef of iPads. Um, other supplies, that's just miscellaneous ones, your budget books, um, your nameplates, that kind of stuff. You guys, we don't, you guys don't spend a lot of money. Spend a little. Any changes, any concerns? Okay, um, clerk, this is, um, the salary part of Ronnie's salary. That's what's in the regular full-time line item there is the clerk salary. Association dues, we have a few dues that we pay lead to cities, IAMC, IAMU. Travel conferences, um, I've got that set at fifteen hundred. Bree and Ronnie usually attend a fall or a spring conference. I have attended some, but mine is down in the city hall line item.
What's the difference between the twenty-two and the twenty-three budget?
The twenty-two budget included part of my salary. Um, I switched that out. I, I moved around some of the salaries so that they make more sense on what department those come out of. Ronnie doesn't really do much with the water and the sewer anymore, so it made more sense to have her salary come out of the clerk line than, um, like bringing in who does just water and sewer. Um, city hall's budget. Our association dues went up. Um, you can see in fiscal twenty-one, we have fifty-three hundreds. That's why that increased. Um, travel to conferences, that is my budget line item for when I go to a conference. Building maintenance and, um, pretty much everything is set. Our audit fees are gonna go up around the five hundred dollars. Any, any questions? Other cap equipment, I put four thousand down there. We've got a furnace that we're heading along, so we may need to replace the furnace. Um, so that's what that four thousand dollars down there on other cap equipment is. As a potential.
So what's the court?
Court recording fee?
Recording fee?
Yeah, we don't, I mean, there's nothing there. We used it when we, oh, when we bought, um, a rental place that we had to record. I think that's the time I can think about.
What about the, um, request for us to have microphones, which not much really want yet. They've requested it a couple of times.
I have not got any estimates on how much, but that's something I could look at into. Yeah, that's not in the budget anywhere. So we will look at that. That would go up into the council line item. Elections, there's zero in the budget for elections. We won't have, hopefully an election in twenty-three unless there's a special election, but. Um, legal fees, they're pretty much, they vary. Um, it's set at fifteen thousand right now. Um, we've already spent seventy-five hundred for half of the year. So we'll be at about legal fees. Insurance, that thirty-three thousand is, that's part of our property insurance. Remember I said there was a separate line item for kind of a, where to put it all as opposed to breaking it out. And that is the end of general fund.
So insurance in twenty-two was just estimated by?
No, no, uh, I just spread it out a little more. And our group insurance, our health insurance went down, but not a lot. But that's part, that's part of the more comp, sorry, I'm getting late. Um, yeah, no, I just spread it out, spread it around a little more. That is the end of general fund. Um, for our schedule, we're scheduled to do all of the other funds next. Until weeks, three weeks, February seventh.
Yep.
So we sure can wait. It's, it's Florida nine. I'm, I don't know if you guys wanna keep going and go into it, do you have the funds?
I think we're at a good stock.
What's our homework?
Your homework, um, I will, I will have, um, I've got homework. I will look into the microphones. Try to come up with some money for council travel. What else did I say? What else did you guys say you wanted to be in the budget?
Spread the sirens out.
Try to.
So it doesn't disappear.
We have a fund somewhere for that money.
Nedra's right about microphones and stuff. We hear that, we hear that more often than we need to. I don't, I don't mind it.
All right, I will, I will look at adding those three things to the budget somewhere. If there's any other things. Um, the other, yeah, that's all we can do on the work session. We do have the resolution you guys have to pass. For the, um, total max property tax levy. Do I need to explain that?
We still have a little wiggle room between what we're at and what the max levy is.
Yeah, and all my papers are up there, so I'm gonna. Yeah, and all my papers are up there, so I'm gonna, I don't remember exactly what I, what the resolution looks at. Okay, does anyone have any questions on the max levy or what it's about or what, what it's needed for? My understanding was you wanted it to stay under ten, um, so I put the max levy rate at nine point nine. Right now it's sitting somewhere between nine point five and nine point eight. It might be close to that nine point eight if I put back in some of this stuff. So nine point nine is the highest we could go. If for some reason you decide you wanna raise it higher, we would not be able to. Cities are now required to put this in there, um, the only thing this does not include is a debt service levy, we could still take out a loan and.
This is only for our year twenty-three.
Yeah.
I see a little bit of those.
Yeah.
So.
And what was the date for setting the public hearing?
Yes, the date for setting the public hearing on it is December or February twenty-first.
Reason I moved here, we have discussions about this every year. Second, and we end up basically at, and it ends for locals. I can't remember when I first got here, but it wasn't good. It was higher. So it's good right now.
Got a motion in the second, any other discussion? Roll call?
Lawler?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to the chairman?
Motion to the chairman.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Well, it's a budget season, you're not gonna have twenty minutes.
I know the way it's always been on, I have to, I have to.